I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk take your roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZiel. Weber.
He's waiting.
Oh. There you are. Brooke.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, first thing up is comments and suggestions from citizens present. This is your opportunity to talk about something that's on your mind that is not on the agenda tonight. And if you would, please keep your comments brief and please try not to repeat what other people have said. Did I miss anything? You got it. Okay. Does anyone have a comment? If you would, please state your name, address.
So my name is Kristin Emerson. I live on Green Street. Do you need more specific than that?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for taking my comment.
Microphone, so we can hear or not?
Uh... Well, but they can't hear. They don't have headphones on, Jeff.
So am I waiting? Okay.
Hey, Paul.
Hey, Paul. We're just waiting on a microphone for the citizen comments right now.
Okay.
So you don't have to whisper.
Did you go to City Fire? I was wondering about you.
I know. Will this one reach?
I was wondering.
Put it on that step ladder. Will this one reach? Oh.
Ah, excellent. Kyoryoki Verlara.
Did she just unplug?
Bluetooth connected.
Thank you.
Check, check. Do you guys hear me?
Chris, before you start, one thing I'd like to add is that in order to make statements tonight, you must be a resident of the city of Hudson. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay. Yes, I'm good to go?
Yep.
Okay, so by the looks of it, I think you're going to get a lot of anti-science remarks tonight, and I expect you're intelligent enough to weed through those. I would like to say as an aside, I teach second grade in Minnesota. I teach 30 second graders all day long. They wear masks. I have not had to remind even one of them in two weeks to even pull it over their nose.
Mayor, as a reminder, this is on the agenda for this evening.
Okay.
So, okay, if this is on the agenda, are we going to not have any comments about this then?
The council policy is, is that if it's on the agenda, it's not open conversation during citizen comments.
Yeah, I'm aware of the policy.
If during that agenda item, the council would like to decide to allow public comments, they would need to table the item, and then the item would be posted and published as a public hearing for our next meeting, so that way everyone knows that they would be able to come and comment on it if they liked.
Well, it looks like what was on the agenda was the veto, not actual mask mandate.
It's discussing masks. That's what the veto is related to directly, is that item.
All right, well, that should probably veto a lot of us if we can't talk about it.
Okay.
I'll wait till, if you don't want me to keep talking about it, I won't.
No, I mean, it's pretty clear. It's on the agenda as possible action on the veto of the council decision to require masks.
Okay.
On the agenda.
That's fine. So I guess then my topic would be on trust in public officials and where it would be written in just maybe any random ordinance that an ordinance was passed by the council and public officials would be exempt from it. I guess I could say it generally in that way. Because I did notice that an ordinance had been passed, and the next day, public officials didn't follow it. And it wasn't until the following day that it was vetoed. So I guess that would be my end of my comments on that. And I guess why should constituents trust their elected officials if they're unable or unwilling to follow an ordinance? And, you know, leading by example. I guess my next topic would be in regards to the diversity appointee. I noticed that a change happened today.
Again, this is on the council agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Right, but the change that happened today wasn't on the agenda until...
It was on, it doesn't matter. The agenda item is what matters. We can't have a conversation about an agenda item.
Okay, so you're not interested in hearing public comment regarding...
Again, it's the same thing. If the council, when it comes to that item, wishes to take public comments, they can table the item. They can then direct staff to post it and publish it as a public hearing. And then at our next meeting, it'll be an open public hearing for all to comment upon.
Okay, so again, I'm asking, are you not interested in hearing comment about this right now?
No, it's not allowed at this point in time.
Unless it's tabled.
Correct. If the council directs, if the council votes to table the item and then direct it to be posted and published as a public hearing, then that's what will occur, and then you may provide comment at the public hearing at our next meeting.
Okay. So I know that people have things to say about this, especially with the last-minute changes, so maybe it could be tabled and have a public hearing.
That would be a council decision when that agenda item comes out.
Okay.
You understand that?
Bluetooth connected.
All right, then. Well, I hope you guys will take it upon yourselves to listen to what the public has to say, especially with last-minute changes, because it does seem, I guess, not necessarily very transparent and honest. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there a way to shut that off?
Shelley Tugus, 326 Valley Commons, library director. I'm here just to thank Aaron Reeves, Mike Bronze, Ryan Watson, Mark Eaton Johnson, the police, all the people with public works who were up long before dawn on Friday to coordinate the response to the damage at the library and obviously the whole city. Outside of my own home, the library is my favorite place. And judging by hundreds and hundreds of social media comments, a lot of people in this community feel the same way. And I'm just really, really grateful for everyone on city staff for all that you've done. And I know we're going to come through this okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Hi, I'm Carrie Rice. I live at 1470 Lee Circle, and I'm a proud resident of Hudson. I'm especially proud today because of what I saw on display last Friday and through the weekend. After a devastating storm, people came together to help each other out. They helped their neighbors. They helped people they didn't know. Strangers came into the city to help us. They didn't ask what political party they belonged to. They didn't ask what their religion was or if they had a religion. They just helped each other out to keep us safe. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that. It's in stark contrast to what we have seen in political discours where people come from outside of our community and sometimes try to stir things up or create a hostile environment or intimidate people who come to meetings like this. So I just want to say thanks to all the people here. I'm proud to be from Hudson and proud of all of our city workers who help coordinate an immense task. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
I'm going to sit.
That's fine.
I'm wobbly, so... Hi, my name is Jane Dries. I might not get to talk long. I live at 441 Red Brick Road.
You're outside the city.
I'm outside the city, but I'm about to be annexed.
Well, but we have a pretty steadfast rule here that citizen comments are for the residents of the city of Hudson.
So how do I get this heard, or do I just give you my comments?
You just give them to us. That would be the best.
Okay, all righty.
I know that this is coming up at Plan Commission. You're going to have plenty of opportunity with public hearing and things like that for this.
Will I be allowed to speak there?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Do you want this?
Sure.
You've already got some copies of my letters.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Oh, you bet. You too.
Do you publish a schedule of those open discussions that means that open discussion?
All right, so this is kind of a difficult situation because we are not supposed to be having any type of interchange discussion with people that are here for citizen comments because these items are not on the agenda. And so, I mean, the citizen comments are generally items that are not on the agenda, so as elected officials, it would be kind of a violation of the meeting law to be having an open discussion back and forth on this. So let me just say this. There's a long process on that annexation.
We can't hear you.
Does this go to the speakers? Did you say it, Jeff? There is a long process on the annexation question for the Lochne property. And this will be the final destination if, in fact, it gets through the Plan Commission. So that's where everyone will have an opportunity to speak on that issue, and there will be at least one public hearing on it. And you will definitely have an opportunity to weigh in as the process unfolds. There are plenty of stops before it gets to the council here for annexation. So you will definitely have opportunity. Are there any other citizen comments? Yeah. Please be respectful of what we've said already. If you're not a resident, if there's something on the agenda, you cannot be speaking to those things.
My name's Beth Weiskopf. I live at 2408 Donaghy Way. Some couple of people that came before me that said what I wanted to say. But I do want to thank all of the city staff, firemen, policemen, Cell Energy Community for really coming through with this city. I've lived through my whole life. I've never seen destruction like this. And it's just amazing for everybody to come together to help all their neighbors out. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Any other citizen comments? Any other citizen comments? Any other citizen comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from September 7, 2021, regular council meeting. Approve the council claims in $1,926,214.11. Approve final development plans and certificate of compliance for Mr. Carwash at 2251 Badger Drive, CWP West Corp. Approve setting a public hearing date for zoning map amendment application from PUB, Public, to OFC, Office, and comprehensive plan amendment from institutional to neighborhood commercial at Tax Parcel 236-1974-5100, St. Croix Valley Professionals. Approval of certificate of compliance for Mid-Current Church at 201st Street, Mid-Current Church. Approval of certificate of compliance review for 725 8th Street, Home Occupation License, Lori Shute. Approve a drainage and utility easement for a fence installation at 12 Fieldstone Bay, Paul and Brienne Burning. Appointment of Suzie Coram as the PUC representative on the Planning Commission. Discussion and possible action on reappointing Andrew Hassan and Pat Nolan to the Public Utility Commission. And the appointment of Kurt Larson to the Hudson Housing Authority.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. A discussion of possible action on approving charter ordinance 21-01, changing the term of the mayor from two years to three years.
The council voted to approve this action at the last meeting, but implemented, we have to have a charter ordinance change and then also a regular ordinance change, which is the next agenda item.
Move to approve. Or, excuse me, you had suspend the rules, right?
Yep.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Move to approve charter ordinance 21-01, changing the term of mayor from two years to three years.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay.
Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on ordinance number 18-21, changing how council meetings, council start time is set.
We have to do 5.2.
No, you've got to do 5.2.
5.2.
Didn't we do that already?
That was 5.1.
It was a charter ordinance, now it's the ordinance.
I apologize. Discussion of possible action on approving ordinance number 17-21, amending the city code related to the mayor's term of office.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Discussion, or I'm sorry, a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to approve ordinance number 17-21, amending the city code related to the mayor's term of office.
Second.
A motion, second to approve. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
No.
Motion's approved. Again, discussion of possible action on ordinance number 18-21, changing how council meeting start time is set.
Again, an item discussed at last meeting. This gives the council the flexibility to set the meeting start time by resolution and not having to amend the city ordinance every time, if you decide to make the change in the future.
Move to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
A motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette.
No.
Alms.
No.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance number 18-21, changing how council meet start time is set. I really would prefer to see it stay at 7 o'clock as the, after I had a week of talking with others.
We've got a, we've got a motion on the table right now without a second.
Oh, sorry.
I can second it so we can have discussion.
All right, we have a motion, second.
So again, I just leave it as, to me, in my mind, for people to get back from the cities or when winter hits, roads will be bad. It's our job to stay here until we're done talking. And I just, it's a lot easier for folks not to have to rush into a meeting if they really, truly want to speak. So I would prefer to see it stay at 7 o'clock.
I want to add a question about the ordinance in and of itself. So we are saying a time to be set by resolution.
Correct.
Now, that would mean that we would need to further change to it and decide on a time, is that...
Correct. Your meetings currently take place at 7 o'clock. In order to change that, the council, by a majority vote, would be required to pass a resolution adopting a different starting time.
And can that happen tonight? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow where...
No, there's no resolution on the agenda tonight, so it would need to come back at a future date.
So it would need to come back and identify time. So passing this does not say it's flexible and we can change it whenever.
Correct. It doesn't change the start time.
Got it.
It changed, it changes the method of adopting a new start time.
Understood. So I'm very similar to Mr. Morissette's comments here. I think of this in terms of people that are in the future in our seats and giving them the opportunities. So having it later, and we're here to do our city business until whenever, but I would see moving it to an earlier time as maybe ruling out some people that may want to devote their time to city council. So that's why I'm opposed.
I like the idea because it gives the city council flexibility to set it at times that work both for the public, for council members, and really importantly, for city staff. I think it's not reasonable to expect city staff to be here till midnight on certain nights or 11:00 PM. I think that's not a good way to run local government. I just think we have to give city staff a break. I'm open to talking about flexibility in terms of what that start time would be. I'm open to talking about flexibility in terms of seasonal start times because I think that could affect it, whether we're talking about summer or winter. I appreciate Randy's point. But I'm not sure it helps us to be locked into something. And as far as future council members go, I think they're going to want the flexibility of setting start times because I think it's actually going to attract more candidates. I think if you're in a teaching field and have a real early morning or another field where you're working early mornings, that's going to eliminate certain people from council. So I don't know, think it's going to distract. I think either way you do it, you're going to, you're going to have, you know, potential candidates maybe not, not working for them. But I just think it's a flexibility thing, and I think we can always go back to the, as I understand the ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, you could, by resolution, kind of change, you could change back and forth. So you could meet at 7 o'clock for six months, and you can meet at 6 o'clock for six months. Or if you want to meet at 7 o'clock for a year and try it, you could... So I think it just opens up the door for a lot of flexibility, which I think is good for, again, public, council, and city staff.
So currently, you can change the start time of your meetings, but by ordinance.
Right.
And you have rules as to what happens when an ordinance is passed, and then it needs to be published before it's effective, published in the newspaper. So you have the flexibility to change it. There's just more process, and there's time, and there's cost associated with it. So the change is moving it to a resolution which doesn't require publication and can be adopted at any point by the council. So that's the, that's the question on the table for the council.
And I've reached out to several constituents, getting their perspective. And just like you were saying, Paul, or Councilman DeZiel, no matter what, it's, some people like early, some people like late. So it's a hard thing to please everyone. I'm just wondering, for our city employees, when they do work this later nights on council meetings or during committee meetings, do they have comp time so they have a little flexibility with their schedule to go home earlier someday if they were here late? How does that work?
Majority of our staff that come to these meetings, well, I would say almost all of them, unless it's a unique situation, are salaried. So we do not have comp time. You know, we want to try to give, obviously, our staff flexibility to try to balance hours and things like that, but there is not a comp time component, so they're not tracking that they're at the meeting for four hours. So that means that week that they're going to, you know, take off four hours early on Friday. We do not have that. You know, basically, as salaried employees, we work the hours necessary to do the job. And that does mean, you know, unfortunately, night meetings that can go long for employees, but it's not that then they get some sort of comp time bank that they can use later. No.
But they would have some flexibility if something came up and they needed to go home early a day. There wouldn't be a penalty.
We do try to definitely be flexible with our staff to allow them, you know, the ability to balance hours and, you know, and things like that, yes. But there's not a comp time component or anything like that. No.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess I also want to say, again, it's not life or death. It's not black or white. It's just a question of preference. I mean, some people prefer six, some people prefer seven. Can we live with either one? Yes. And I guess I would just want the future councils to have that flexibility to make that decision for themselves.
I'm concerned about the talk about flexibility, so I want to get, again, more clarity here. You know, it's hard enough to engage the public in municipality, in government. And so static time above all is what's important. How much flexibility is this allowing for, truly?
Well, I think it allows for the council to figure out, or future councils to figure out how they would want to approach it. And I also want to say that everything is published, and everything would be totally upfront with the public. So there, you know, I don't want to confuse the public. That's not my motive at all. So I think everything would be published, everything would be advanced. We might find that the public might want a slightly earlier meeting time based on if they have small children, they need to put in the bed, whatever. There might be, there might be reasons to do that that might get better public input. So again, I just think it's, why lock ourselves in to something when it's not necessary? When it's simply just a preference that future councils might want to try different things?
Well, let me, let me see if I can help clarify.
Thank you.
You have the flexibility to change your meeting currently because your ordinance specifically says that you meet at 7 o'clock. In order to change the meeting time, you have to pass another ordinance. So, because you can only change an ordinance with an ordinance. So for example, if we wanted to change the meeting time to 6 o'clock, tonight, we would have an ordinance on the agenda. Council, if it approved that change, would then pass, adopt the ordinance, and then it would have to go to the paper. And based on publication schedules, it might not be till another month when you can change that time. And there's a cost associated with publishing that ordinance in the newspaper. So it's a time and cost issue currently that if you want to change going into a particular season, you have to allow for lead time in order to make that change based on publication schedules. And it costs the city some money in order to publish that ordinance in the paper. To make the change that's being proposed by resolution, there is no publication, so you eliminate that time issue. So if you wanted to change your meeting start time for the next meeting in two weeks, you could do it without having to worry about that lead time, and there's no publication requirement, so there's no cost associated. So really, we're not talking about changing the flexibility because you currently have, the council currently has the flexibility to change its meeting time if it wants to. You're talking about lead time in changing that meeting time, and you're talking about eliminating the cost of publication, the publication of the ordinance in order to change that time. So that's really, that's really what is at issue here. It's not about the flexibility, because you have the flexibility. If you want to change it, you know, starting November 1st, you can adopt an ordinance and follow the process, and there's no problem with doing that. That then becomes policy, a policy consideration for the council as to what time you meet. This is, this is just about what process you follow to change the meeting time, what the lead time is and what the cost is because we're talking about a resolution versus an ordinance. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. And I'll just restate that I'm...
Just a point of information. We have to try to speak up because the folks in the back are having trouble hearing us.
Thank you.
And this won't reach, so we'd be...
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just think if we're not consistent through this and if we keep changing it, I mean, we have enough problems trying to interact with our general public constituents right now. And if we keep switching it back and forth, and I get what you're saying, Paul, I do, and I respect it, but it'll just confuse people. It's easier just to set one and leave it. I understand.
I like the idea of the flexibility and so I, and being able to change more quickly and without a cost. quickly and, and without a, a cost. I think that this is really a reasonable idea. And I don't see us using it a lot, but I, I do see it as something that makes things easier for the, the council when situations come up where we want to make a change and, or try some things without having to go through an ordinance change.
I think a set time, I'm just going to restate, I think a set time is transparency of government to our constituents.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay.
What'd he say?
Did he say nay?
He does say, yeah.
Did-
Yes, Jim did say nay. Correct. Jim?
Correct.
Motion failed.
No.
No.
The mayor-
It's an ordinance.
So I will, I'll vote for the, for the motion.
I, I thought that the mayor didn't get a vote on an ordinance.
It's a resolution, though?
No, it's, it's an ordinance.
I think it needs failed for an-
Oh, you're right, because it's an ordinance, it requires support. Correct? Oh, good point, yeah.
But we know what you would have thought.
All right. Motion fails. Discussion and possible action regarding reinstalling catwalks on Second Street between Vine Street and Lake Malibu.
All right. Good evening, council members. So as we, as a part of the Highway 35 project-
Dean to grab the mic.
Do you want me to have the mic?
Well, of course he-
I'm kind of facing the wrong-
They're picking it up with the fuck there, but can they hear him back there? Can you guys hear Dean?
I don't know if they even want to hear me. I know they're all here for me, but- All right. Oops, that's not plugged in. Testing, testing.
Power on.
Hello, hello. Is it on? All right. I'm on, I think. Okay. So as part of the Highway 35 project, our friends at WISDOT decided to remove all of the, it's called catwalks, also known as carriage walks, out walks. They're called a bunch of different things in other places. But essentially, a piece of the sidewalk that goes between the public sidewalk, parallel to the street and to the curb. And I realized that my, my nice picture that I had intended to attach to the issue sheet didn't come through, so I emailed all of you this morning with a picture of it. So hopefully that clarifies what I'm talking about with this whole thing. So it's kind of confusing to explain. So, anyway, so WISDOT decided not to reinstall these catwalks. When we asked them why they weren't being replaced, they essentially said it's not their policy and they just don't. And they never, shockingly, never engaged us to ask if we wanted them put back in or not. And we've heard from a number of constituents, and I know Sarah can say more to this too, but we've heard from constituents that previously had catwalks and now don't, and they're not happy about it. So a few benefits that catwalks have for the public, in particular, the private property that they are in front of. For some people, they allow for a place to put a garbage can or recycling bin for, you know, where we have garbage service out front and don't have an alley or something like that. They allow easy access to and from the street for, if you park your car in the street, can walk up to your house from the front. And then I think probably most importantly, they allow easy access to and from the street for emergency crews if and when they ever had to go from the street to somebody's house. Especially in the wintertime, imagine there's a snowbank there. If the sidewalk wasn't there, they have to go climb the snowbank or they have to go around to the corner or something like that. And, you know, every second counts for, for public safety related things. And because of all those reasons, staff generally supports having these catwalks there. The problem is the cost. And because WISDOT didn't engage us with this, we did not include that in the budget for the project. So the estimate for putting these back in for properties that had one before, not including the ones that didn't have them before, is about $8,400. If we were to add these for every property along Second Street from Vine Street north to Lake Malibu, it would be about $13,000. Generally, kind of where, where staff is at with this is that we feel that putting the catwalks in that had them before makes sense. And putting them in where they didn't have them before doesn't really make sense, just, you know, cost-wise. And some people don't want them, so I don't want to, you know, force the issue on people who don't want them. So unfortunately, we don't have a funding source identified this time. There is a small possibility there would be funds remaining in the project budget. If not, we'll work to identify funding available from other projects that may have come in under budget. And in the worst case, city would include the funds for replacement through a part of next year's budget and levy. Or, you know, there's the option of not putting them back in, obviously, too. But we do recommend a motion to approve the replacement of catwalks that were existing prior to the beginning of the project. Any questions or comments? Yeah.
How many want them? Have you been to each that have been removed? I think it's our obligation as a city to replace them as the owners want them.
We have not gone door to door and asked, but that's, that's likely the next step if we were to approve any of them going back in, would be to just ask everybody that had one before if they want it back or not. So if there's some people that had it before and don't want it back, this number could go down. We're just kind of assuming that everybody had, who wanted, or had one before, wanted it back in.
Dean, so are we thinking, we're hopeful to get this done yet this year and kind of our worst-case scenario, depending on how it plays out here tonight, would be funding it for next spring, then?
Yeah. So the reason why it's on the council tonight is to, if, if that's the direction the council wanted to go, to get it done yet this year with the Highway 35 project, because the project bids are a lot cheaper than it would be for a standalone project, say, next year, you know, sometime thereafter.
Same this year.
So it makes sense. If we want to do them, to do them now. That being said, obviously, funding is an issue that we need to work out, so.
So- Motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
To do what?
To take Dean's recommendation to approve the ones that, replacing the ones that are already there if the property owner wishes it to be replaced. Is that all right with you, Sarah?
I will second that.
Okay. So if somebody who does not have a catwalk at this time, and I like that you gave me that name because when I wrote you a note over the weekend, my husband and I were trying to word things to describe the catwalk, so that you would understand what I was asking. But anyway, if you, if somebody wants to put in a catwalk that doesn't have one at this time, can they, does the city allow a private contractor to just come in and do that for them? Or can the homeowner, or property owner do it on their own?
Yes, they can. We don't really have, like, a firm policy on them, per se. That being said, we don't discourage them for the reasons that I specified before. Yeah, generally, if they weren't there before and they want to be put in, we feel that that would be either a cost that the property owner would have to bear themselves or be part of a, you know, special assessment for that kind of thing. And obviously, we're, we've, we've already done the special assessments for the sidewalks for this project. We feel we don't want to get into that again. Unless somebody, you know, completely agreed, you know, hey, I want this in, I'll pay for it, you know, bill me, that kind of thing. We can certainly still do that, but I don't want to, you know, get too involved in putting ones in that weren't there unless the council directed otherwise.
Anybody else? All right.
Do we need to address the funding?
Oh, what, why don't-
Well, I, I think, I think at this time, you know, there's a slim chance there'll be some money left at the end of this project that we had, that we have bonded for it. I doubt it, though. But, you know, we can always hope. Otherwise, what we, what our plan would be is that we'll look at other projects that we're doing this year. And, you know, generally speaking, we have ups and downs with all of our projects. And we're only talking $8,400 if everyone wants them replaced. So we assume we'll be able to pick it up from some other project. And worst case, whatever we can't pick up from other projects this year, we'll just throw into some sidewalk budget next year, that difference. So we'll get to it one way or the other. Worst case, it'll be added to next year's budget for sidewalk replacement. Thank you.
Everybody good?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion and possible action on the appointment of members to the diversity committee.
I've included all the recommended appointments by the council members. If you remember, what our policy says for this is that each council member gets to make one direct appointment to the committee, and then there shall be two additional appointments that are made using our regular appointment process. So I'll run through the appointments. And then when I'm done, if any of the council members have any changes that they would like, now is the time to say so before, before they're completed. So for Councilmember Alms, I have emailed this out to the council prior to the meeting. His appointment is Sherry Christie. For Councilmember Brock, it would be Tyler Warwick Mick. For Councilmember DeZiel, Rolando Vera. For Councilmember Hall, Lindsay Elwood. For Councilmember Morset, Ainsworth E. Burgess Jr. For Councilmember Weber, Rachel Estrada DX. And for Mayor O'Connor, Mary Yakub Rad. If any council member has any changes to that, now would be the time to, to make that change. Not hearing any. Then what that leaves us with are the two members that are appointed via our normal appointment process where the mayor makes the appointment, but requires confirmation of the council. Those appointments are for a one-year term and a two-year term. The one, I'm sorry, the two-year term is for Paul Adams, and the one-year term is for Jordan Yakub.
I'm going to reapprove your recommendations.
Okay.
Second?
We got a motion, a second to approve. Discussion?
This is Jim Weber. We're, I think, we're lacking a member from the senior community on any of these nominations. I'm not positive, and it's not one of the, certainly perhaps not one of the questions. That is one of the major diverse community that we have. And I'm wondering, I don't know, is there, out of that list of, of folks that applied, is, are there any who are in the senior community?
What's your definition?
65 and older?
Okay. Anybody?
My appointment is 62.
Isn't there any public comment on this?
Uh, no. The, well, there could be if, if the council wanted to remove this from the agenda, table it, and do a public hearing on it. Which would happen at the next council meeting, I think. Is that enough notice for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I can't, I can't say Paul Adams is 65, but-
Yeah, I can't tell you either, you know, we generally don't ask age on any of our sort of applications or even just in general for that. So I, I can't tell you for sure. It's possible, but I honestly do not know.
I know he's old enough to qualify for AARP.
Less than 50.
Yes.
Paul Adams does not look 65 to a silver.
I just wanted to comment a few things I have heard from constituents. One is that we are missing a faith base of representing the Jewish faith and knowing that there was somebody who applied with that background and encouraging us to think about that. When we think about voices that are needed at the table, I think that could be really beneficial. The other concern I've heard from constituents is about two individuals from the same household with a similar background and that perspective. And I just want to address the question about tabling this. While I appreciate that request and that perspective, this has been a topic that has been on our agenda for a long time. I am ready, I think people have had a chance to bring us emails, suggestions, and I appreciate all of those. I think we need to take action because I don't want to keep pushing this further down the road. So.
So a couple thoughts. First of all, I want to thank the 19 people that applied to be on this diversity committee. I think we need to give it up for all those folks. I was very impressed with the applications, and I think I'm really excited for the city of Hudson because I think this committee is going to go forward and do some great things and really make our community more inclusive. My question is, I think all the applications were impressive. I had a question on Jordan Yakub, who I believe is related to Mary, and Mary has already been appointed or is being appointed. And I had the same question, which was, in a town of 14,000-something people, I don't have the new census data, why, why with nine members would we want two from the same family? It just does not seem diverse. And I have no issue with a high school student being on here. Jordan's in high school, so Jordan, wherever you are, don't take this in a, in a personal way. I think you're awesome and I love that you're interested. I just think we should broaden that out. So I, I, I'm nervous about two in the same family. So, so if there's a way we could maybe get one of the other applicants in there, if, if Mr. Mayor, if you would consider that or something tonight, there's a lot of qualified people. I know Councilman Alms had some really good applicants, I think, in your district. So I don't know if there's a way we could work a second person in place of Jordan or something, but I guess that's up to the council. But that would be my thinking, is I, I share the, I just think the two members of the same family, it might be too much representation for a single family on, on a diversity board, which the whole purpose is we're trying to hear from diverse voices. So I'm not sure how to work that out tonight.
All right. So let me, let me explain my thinking on this. Obviously, when, when the, whatever resolution ordinance was passed, excuse me, with the staggered terms, we had a situation where we have one term right now that is for one year. And somebody would either have to be reappointed or we would have to find somebody new for that position in, in one year. Excuse me. I was cheering too much over the weekend. So, not about what's happened in Hudson, but I was out of town at the time. So Jordan Yakub worked as an intern for the city, for me, and for the departments here. She has, she did a great job, as did Ben Kenoki, putting our newsletter together. Thank you. And, and so we had a chance to see her at work. And while we were talking about the diversity committee, Jordan had said that she would have an interest in that and wondered if it was possible to appoint a high school student. She was the only high school student that, that was interested. Now, obviously, she was close to what was going on, so had more, I guess, inside information about this diversity committee. So I thought it might be a good idea, especially for the very, very beginning of this committee, that we should have a young person being represented as well. Somebody from a high school. And of course, we don't have a pick here that is designated for youth, for high school, I presume, in this, in this case. And so a lot of them that might be interested would have been, would not have applied. But given that this is just one year, it made sense to me that somebody that was in high school, especially a senior, it would be a great opportunity to fill that unique situation where we only have one term for one year. So when we talk about, and I truly appreciate what you're saying here, Sarah, with regard to having the different face in our community being represented, I think that's an important thing. The problem here is that we have a lot of boxes to check, and we're not going to be able to check them all, no matter who we put here. And, you know, so we have youth that we could check, we have faith that we could check. We have an interesting situation, again, a unique situation, where we might be able- we have an interesting situation, again, a unique situation, where we might be able to see what happens with the interaction between a parent and, and a young adult. And we know that young adults don't always share and probably more often do not share the same ideals as their parents. And I think that that is a good box to check and I think it provides good representation on this committee. It is diverse. It does create, I mean, I understand, you know, the issue that they're coming from the same household and, and maybe that doesn't look like diversity to me. When you, when you dig deeper into it, I think it does provide good diversity and it does check off some of those other boxes. So, and especially given that this is going to be a one-time opportunity that this council has, because we're only going to have this situation one time where we have one year for a term that could be filled by somebody that's in high school. Because when that's up, that's going to be a three-year term. And there's going to be nobody that's in high school that's going to be able to make that type of commitment. So that was my thinking. And, and I would hope that, you know, given, again, that this is just a one-year term, that we could come to agreement that this is a good opportunity to...
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. Tyler Vorwick-Mick is a young person herself, she's in college, so we do have a voice of youth there.
I say we should give it a chance. I mean, these great applicants that stepped up to this to try to get involved and for a young gal to do that or anybody, and a young person is, is, is great. It's very, that shows the strength of character right there. And I think she could add a lot to it regardless of the household. If things don't work out, we change it. It's automatically going to change it. Let's give these great slate of candidates a chance.
I'm wondering, I like the idea of a high school and I like the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, I think it's really a five or six-month term on this first round because it would go through April, is that right?
Correct. So the term basically would run until we do the appointments again at our April organizational meeting.
Okay. So what I'm wondering is if, if, depending on what the council feels and obviously, Mr. Mayor, what I'm wondering is if we do want a high school candidate, if we could go to the high school and open up some kind of an application process and put it on, you know, maybe get, put it on announcements, have some kind of, here's why I'm interested in diversity committee, because we might generate ten, twelve, fifteen applicants from the high school. Maybe we could come back at the next meeting and fill that five or six month slot. It would just give us the diversity, I think, we're looking for, also with that young perspective and kind of taking advantage of that we have the six months to work with. So that would be my suggestion for maybe somehow moving forward.
I agree. I think that, first of all, it wasn't clear that this was open to somebody who was under eighteen. So that probably, people, it wasn't on the student's radar. The other thing is that we can always change the charter of the diversity committee so that there would be a one-year term for someone to represent the, the high school and open it up to, say, eleventh and twelfth graders or something along that line. So that's, that would be my opinion.
And I have a question for Mr. Vivian. Is, since it is a minor, is this something like a parent would need to sign off on?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I, I agree. I like the idea of opening it up to other high school students too. I, I think that was something that we weren't clear on, so I appreciate that suggestion as well.
I think that's a good idea, but I think we should move ahead now and looking at the April appointment, having, if we need, if there is a position available, then that we're looking at, we have reached out to the high school and gotten this cadre of potential people who could be on this committee that Paul is referring to. But I think we should, I'm, I'm ready to move ahead now with the nominations as they stand.
I'll echo what Mr. Weber just said. We've been talking about this for a very long time, as we all know, right? Let's get the ball rolling. Let's just make the appointment and we can always look at this for, for next spring, doing something with the high school and reach out.
All right, everybody good? All those in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the motion on the floor, sorry.
To accept all of them.
The two, the two.
Yep. All right, everybody understand it? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay.
Motion's approved.
One more order of business on this is that I think the charter, so to speak, calls for a council person to be appointed as a liaison. So I don't know if we need to do that tonight as well.
You are correct, and that's the one that I forgot to talk about. Generally, we do all those appointments in April with the organizational meetings, so it was one of those ones that just kind of slipped. So I would say at this point, I don't think you need to make that appointment of the council liaison tonight, you know, so you're not trying to make a decision on the fly. I would say, my recommendation would be is if you're interested in being a council liaison, to reach out to the mayor and we'll finalize that next meeting. It doesn't delay anything at all. It's just, it's a non-voting liaison council member that will attend the meetings.
Got it.
Okay. All right, you good? Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, discussion on possible action on the mayor's veto of the council decision to require masks in city facilities.
So this is, included in the agenda packet is the veto, which must be submitted in writing to the city clerk, which it was. And then I also included the state statutory language on the mayor's veto authority and what the process is. And basically, if the mayor vetoes a council act, it'll be presented to the council at its next meeting, a two-thirds vote of all the members of the council, so then be required to, I guess, effectively overturn the veto. So that's, the veto's been received, it's being presented to the council, now it's up to the council to discuss and decide what action they would, they would like to take. Again, it would take a motion to overturn the veto, which would have to be, again, by two-thirds vote of all the council members, which is four council members, or if no action is taken, the veto stands.
So I, that's how I start by saying I appreciated the veto, because what I heard you asking for was clarity on two things. One, the St. Croix County Health, what are they actually asking for? And then there were, second, there was some confusion about a vote from a council member. So I don't know if you just want to explain the veto before we talk about it.
Sure, and I just want to know that, and I will, what, what motions are in order? Is it just to overturn the veto or is it, this is obviously new? Okay.
Yeah, so the, so the issue on the floor for the council is, is the veto and a motion to overturn or take no further action.
Right.
Would be your two options.
Okay, so it, the reasoning, I think I laid it out for anybody that had a chance to read it, it was a memo that was sent or email that was sent to all of the council members. In, in reviewing the, what had happened that evening, there was, there was clearly confusion as to what the county was doing, and I think that that lent to confusion about what the motion was that was put forward. Some members were under the impression, as was I, that, but from information that was presented here, was that the county was, was actually requiring masks and not just recommending them. I went back and looked at the county, looked at CDC and saw that, in fact, with their advisory high, they still were just recommending, they weren't requiring. And then, and there was confusion in the vote. We had on a voice vote, it sounded as though, and, and watching the video again, was confirmed that there were three votes for and three votes against. When, when we called for the roll call on that, it turned out being four, four. One of the council members turned, turned their vote around. So again, lending to confusion. Also, there was no end date. And, and so it didn't say how long this mask mandate was going to be in place. I know that other places that have mask mandates, they say we're going to push this out for, we'll look at it again on a certain date, maybe a month or two down the road. So once again, I thought it was probably an appropriate thing to do and knowing, of course, that statutorily, we were going to be looking at this issue again. So that was the reason for the veto.
Mr. Mayor, I did ask that we could queue up and watch the video again so that folks that are here could watch it and so that we could address your concerns that you raised in the veto. Is it okay if we watch that portion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Action on requiring masks in city-owned facilities.
I heard you. Aaron, did you mind?
I, I can start off. This was requested, passed me by a couple of people. And I have in my memo just the comment that I did discuss this with our front desk staff, who would be the ones that mostly dealt with people coming in. They would prefer not to, it can be a rather contentious issue, as we all know right now. Unfortunately, very unfortunately, but it is. And so they would rather not have to deal with asking people to do that, as sometimes it's the simple asking can cause some heightened responses. So with that, our staff would prefer not, but again, this is obviously a council policy decision. I'm just weighing in on, after talking with our front desk staff, what they, what they would prefer. And as we move forward with our city hall project, if you have a chance to look, we're almost there with our new front desk layout. We're waiting for the countertops to come in, because as with everything, they're delayed about a month, but they should be in with the next week or so. When they go in, we put in a full plexiglass barrier, which also would pretty much help as far as our staff separation. But again, like I said, this is a council policy decision, so I'll leave it with that as far as our staff come in.
I like the idea of the recommendation and I will move to do so.
I'll second.
We got a motion, a second, discussion?
I, I would like to add some points to that. I still feel that we have a responsibility to look at this from a value base, and our values are that people matter and that we have a responsibility to protect our employees and to protect the people that come into our city-owned buildings. And we have a responsibility to honor what the St. Croix County Public Health has asked us to do, which is until we are below a substantial risk, and at the present moment, we are high in the county. And the minute we are below that substantial, I am totally one hundred percent on board with making it recommended. I think a recommendation is falling short of our responsibility to do our part in our community.
I wanted to make mention that I had the pleasure of doing jury duty a couple of weeks ago, so I was at the county offices and this was after the last meeting before this meeting. And they had it as a recommended signage. I didn't see any staff really wearing masks. So I, I guess my thinking in seconding, or doing a second on Mr. Morset's motion, was really in relation to what the county is doing and kind of taking them as a cue. And so I see doing as a recommendation, basically what they're doing at the county building. I don't know if you've seen anything, if anybody else has seen anything recent at the county building?
That's what I'm seeing when I've been there.
Gotcha.
So how many of the staff wore masks? What percentage did it?
Zero. I don't remember now, I guess. Obviously, we've told, we've put it out to staff that if there is anyone that feels uncomfortable, things like that, that we will, you know, we will require of our office staff, if we have someone in the office, you know, is not feeling comfortable or anything like that. And nobody requested that we, that we added. Because we were more than willing to do that internally wise with our staff, because we can definitely control that. But it was not requested.
Yeah, I'm working at Northwood Technical College. The, most of the staff wears, wears a mask, but the students, the healthcare students do, many of them do, but most of the rest of the ones do not. So, and they said that they didn't want to get into a compliance issue. So they were only, they, their wording was masks are expected, but they're not enforcing. So I think that with the difficulty of it, at this point, probably better recommend than require.
This is a hard one and I've gone back and forth, but I agree with Sarah that I think we have a responsibility in our publicly-owned buildings to keep people safe. Unfortunately, too many citizens have decided not to be vaccinated and as a result, we're prolonging the pandemic. We're not out of the pandemic. And the Delta variant is here and I think it would be prudent to follow the St. Croix County Health guidelines, even if they're not following them themselves, because we should take them seriously. So I would like to see a requirement, but I would like to see it flexible based on the St. Croix County guidelines. So as numbers drop, we would lift that restriction. If numbers hold or go up, we would keep that restriction. But I do think, I think we owe it to our people. The other thing I want to say is, you know, anybody under the age of twelve, they don't have a choice. They cannot get the vaccine. They are the most vulnerable people in our society. It used to be the older folks, now it's the kids. And we have a responsibility to get the kids vaccinated, whether they're coming in, I don't know if their parents come in for meetings. The other thing I want to say is, I appreciate the staff at city hall and I understand that, but city hall is not our only publicly-owned building. Is that correct? So it's a city policy. I just think if the county is saying the numbers are high enough, that they're saying you should be masked indoors, as much as I hate wearing this mask and I hate wearing it tonight, I'll admit it, I'm doing it because that's what the county is requiring. Or that's what, that's what the county health policy, that's, that's, that's literally what they're telling us right now. So I think it has to be a requirement, but I don't want to see it as a permanent thing. I want to see it flexible, so the motion would have to be tied to the levels of the St. Croix County Health, what's it called, Health Office or, I don't know if anybody can relate to that.
And that is totally where I am at too. And like you, I, I'm not a fan of wearing this either, but I am doing it to do, try and do my part as well. And I think as leaders and people that work in our city are leaders as well, I think we have a responsibility to set the example, but I also think we have a responsibility to keep the people that come to our places safe, to know that we've done everything we can, because as a value, people matter.
I'd just say, in keeping what in lab of St. Croix County, and the fundamental issue is choice, and the parents and adults have the choice to do what they feel comfortable doing. It's not for government to, to get involved with that. So the recommendation does just what you guys are asking to do, protecting. So with that, I, again, I would restate my motion as well, is to highly recommend masks. I mean, I wear a mask when I'm supposed to as well. I just got back from Madison, wore a mask. I'm vaccinated. So the point is it's a choice.
It sounds, from my perspective, listening just to the discussion, it sounds as if both Paul and, and Sarah think we need to change the motion, which is what the, to clarify the motion, that there are, there is nothing in the motion about how this ends or who we're following. And I think in that respect, the mayor is correct in vetoing this measure, because it does not have the clarity that is needed. The question is, do we override the veto and then at the next meeting fix this? Or do we just let it, do we let the veto stand and then at the next meeting fix this? That's, those are, it seems to me are two choices.
Nick, does that sound accurate?
Yes, could you, could you summarize that again, what our options are once more, please?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the initial issue that's on the table before the council is the mayoral veto. Right? So you passed a motion and then the mayor vetoed it. And by law, you have the right then to override that veto by a four-vote majority.
Supermajority.
Okay.
So that's, that's your, your option tonight, is to take any action if you'd like. You can allow the veto to stand and come back next month with a different noticed topic and you can take action on that new topic, whatever it might be, whether it be your masking policy or, you know, maybe you put together more specific languages to what you're looking for the, the council to consider. So right now, it's, do you want to override the mayor's veto, which would then reinstate your motion, which was approved at the last meeting? And if you don't override the mayor's veto, then, you know, at a future meeting, you can take up whatever policy take up whatever policy you'd like, with whatever criteria you'd like to have included.
And if we override the veto, the motion that was on the floor stands?
Correct. That is right.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we-
Can we, for clarity, can we reread that motion then?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to finish the video. It was asked to be put up. Let's see it through its entirety.
And I can say from the front desk, it is, and we do get calls asking if masks are required, if it's recommended. We don't say yes or no, avoid the conflict. So it is a lot on the front desk staff to deal with an angry citizen over a mask.
And I understand that. I think a lot of us probably in our work setting totally understand and know how hard that discussion is.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye. I move we recommend a place requiring an open, city-owned and public.
And I'm a nay, because I don't think that's strong enough.
All right, yeah, I think we're going to do a roll call on this.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
No.
Weber?
No.
Brock?
No.
Jim, we're watching the tape. Motion fails. I'm in motion that we require wearing masks at all city facilities, as long as the St. Croix County health guidelines.
I don't know, I just heard him.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
See how you vote.
All those in favor? Close, a nay. Motion's approved.
We get the whole point.
Discussion possible, action on a 10 minute. All right, we're good.
Ken, I am wondering if we can, I'm thinking Jim is confused at this point.
Right.
I'm wondering if, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to try and explain where we're at in the process to Jim, or would you like, prefer to do that?
Well, I can do that, or Nick, but, so Jim, this is what Nick has said. We have, and I think you know, I think you heard this and probably repeated it, we have two options right now. One is to override the veto, takes four votes. By overriding the veto, it would mean that we would have the mask mandate back, back in place until, unless or until the council takes it up again at a future meeting. Or the other option is to uphold the veto and do the same thing, take it up again at the next meeting. If the veto is upheld, then there would be no mask mandate right now. We would still be essentially under county guideline.
Right. And to clarify that, just to make sure, there's no action that needs to be taken to uphold the veto. The only formal action that needs to be taken is to overturn a veto. And so if there's a motion, if the motion is to overturn the veto, and that's approved by four of the council members, what goes back into effect then is what the motion was from the last meeting. And that motion was by Councilmember DeZiel, seconded by Councilmember Brock, to require wearing a mask at all city facilities as long as St. Croix County Health warrants it.
I'll make a motion to overturn Mayor O'Connor's veto.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to overturn the veto. Discussion? Is this debatable?
It is, yes.
So- Can I ask a question of this before the, before the council votes? Because I just want to make sure, you know, if this is reinstated, what it means to our staff.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Aaron.
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Aaron.
Okay, sorry about that. So if, this was not made clear last meeting, and then it was clearly brought up afterwards that there was violations, I guess you'd say, of the council's motion on this. And so I want to make it clear with the council, you know, if you, if you overturn this veto and that motion's reinstated, I want direction for our staff of what we're supposed to do. So for example, if someone comes into City Hall to the front desk not wearing a mask, do you expect our front desk person to tell them to put a mask on? If they do not put a mask on, are we instructed then to ask them to leave? If they do not leave, the only thing we can do is technically trespass them, which means we need to call the police department. Is that what you want to have done, for example, in City Hall? If we have a meeting of one of our committees or commissions, and a committee or commission member is not wearing a mask, do you want our staff to tell them to put a mask on, and if they don't, instruct them that they have to leave that committee or commission meeting? These are things that I want to make sure we're clear on, because it was not clear last meeting, and it left some confusion with staff about what was wanted. These are not all things that have to be included in a motion, but I do want to have clear instruction for our staff of what's expected of us, so we know how to make sure that we're fulfilling what the council wants.
All right, any other discussion?
I think we need to look at what the county had. I printed off the thing today, and it says it's an advisory, a mask advisory. And it's, it should wear a mask. Not telling you you have to wear a mask. Most businesses are requesting that you mask up. They are not requiring it. How about your business?
I think what we're talking about is the St. Croix County Public Health Department, not the county building. So our public health department has, has, has asked us to wear a mask when we are in enclosed settings, because we are at a high transmission level. And I think, you know, frankly, I think it's up to us to change the narrative and to take the politics out of this. This is strictly a matter that is about science and about medicine. And if, it's up to us to lead the way on this.
I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think what's really on the floor here is deciding whether the mayor had the right to take, you know, to take away what we passed, or what was passed by this council. I'm going to echo what Mr. Weber said earlier, and I think that the mayor was right in doing that, because there was not good enough clarification. We hear that point, in fact, from our city administrator, looking for more specific guidance, because the guidance was not given in the motion. And so that's why I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to rescinding the veto. That makes sense?
Overriding.
Overriding, thank you.
I had an employee come up to me in the grocery store and say, "Thank you, thank you, I can't sit eight hours a day wearing that mask." And that's more than one person saying that. It's not your right to do that.
Maybe to your employees.
One other point, I was at a CJCC meeting Monday, Thursday morning. A mask was not required. It was asked to wear, in the county building. It was not mandated, nor should it be, once again. You know, we have a constitution, and you keep telling everybody-
We do.
-to follow that. We have choices, Sarah.
That we have a responsibility to protect our people, and that's with the constitution.
We have the oath to back this up. This is where the oath is, that you rose your hand to.
So I know there's strong feelings on this, and I appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Just to be clear, point of order, we're not talking about a mask mandate for the entire city. So if that's what you're worried about, that's not what we're talking about. Can you allow me to speak, please? Second, we're talking about city-owned buildings. We are elected officials.
All right, all right.
We are elected officials, and it's our job to keep this city safe, okay? Some of us have the responsibility. Can we have a police officer called? Because I'm really not feeling safe right now.
Jeff is here.
Or Jeff? Jeff, can you get some order back there for us? I'm serious. I'm not going to be intimidated by the public.
Without interrupting?
Okay, so, some of us have a job to make sure all of the public is safe, not just our personal lives. As far as constitutional law, I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but I see nothing in the constitution that says you have a right not to wear a mask in a publicly-owned facility during an international pandemic. If you guys can get that for me, love to see it. It's not in Wisconsin law, it's not in U.S. Constitution. So we're not talking about that, we're talking about keeping people safe tonight. Now, to the issue at hand, I was the movement of the last motion, because I'm not confused about St. Croix County guidelines. I talked to Kelly Engine from St. Croix County today specifically about the health advisory that was issued in August. So in August, the first one was issued, that said there was a substantial level of infection in St. Croix County. It's a serious issue, folks. Seventy-five people in the county are dead because of COVID-19. Seventy-five people are dead. This isn't a made-up narrative. We just had a huge storm in Hudson, and you know what happened? People came together. We've had a pandemic for 18 months, and you know what's happening? We don't know how to work together. We have a common enemy, it's called the virus. So we need to work together. That's the only way to working it out of this. So while we really should be talking vaccines, because that's the number-one way to protect yourself right now, it is the number-one scientific way to protect yourself right now. Please get vaccinated, if you're not vaccinated, because you're holding us all back as a community.
Hey, hey.
Keep it down, please. We can't talk about it, right? It's on the agenda. They're trying to discuss it amongst themselves, can we let them do that, please?
Then our second best choice is masking. So the county's saying, because of the high transmission levels, we should be in masks. It is technically advisory, however, I think we should take their advice. So the motion was about taking their advice in the publicly-owned buildings that we are responsible for as elected city officials. This is our job, to keep people safe. I have children who are under 12. They don't have a choice. We have to do everything we can to protect these kids, okay? So while I strongly support masking in our public facilities, I also recognize the mayor's point and Councilman Weber's point, that we probably didn't get the language right last time around. I think it does make sense that there needs to be an end date that we revisit. I think that makes sense. I don't think there's confusion about what the county's looking for. You can go to, it's called the county, St. Croix County Health Dashboard. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom, you'll see it. It's across the board. Even if you're vaccinated, they're saying you should be masking inside any public building right now. So it's clear what the county's saying, the health department, okay? Now, the question I think before the council tonight is, do we go back and override the veto, knowing that there is some problems with the language being a little bit too vague? I'm admitting that, because it was my motion, and no endpoint. Or do we override the veto and kind of live with that? And I think, Councilman Weber, if I'm correct, am I picking you up, right, Councilman Weber? You're saying probably better to go back in two weeks and just try to get it right in terms of language?
Yes, I think there've been a number of points raised tonight that we need to work on, and to take care of our staff, both from a health standpoint and from a duty and responsibility, and their own safety, from people who aren't rational about masks.
I understand that. So I guess in the big picture, I would rather get it right and stick to that, and renew that from maybe month to month, based on the numbers, than to have a fight about the veto, if that makes sense? I would, I'd like, I'd just like to get it right, if that makes sense.
Well, I, too, would like to get it right. My concern is, you know, we lost two weeks with the veto. We're going to lose another two weeks. So that's one month of not doing our part. That's, that's my concern. Is it something where we could overturn the veto and table, a group of us talk with Aaron, and, and set up the specifics at another point? Is that even doable or not doable?
No.
You can overturn.
I would say that would be, have to be a council decision on what actions you want us to, how you want us to handle any sort of directive. I don't think it can be done outside of full council approval. Nick, you can correct me on that if you want, but it just seems like in a decision like this, we'd want the full council direction, because I don't know that we'll get it if we, you know, assign a few council members to it that would garner full support. So I'd like to see it voted on, so I know for sure that it's a decision of the council.
And I, and I agree with that comment, Aaron, and, you know, sometimes this is the challenge when motions get made and you don't have a written policy in front of you that you voted on.
Right.
Right? So, you know, Aaron's expressed some concern from a city staff perspective. If you override the veto, then it is a mask requirement in city buildings, and that's it. That was, that was the detail of the, of the motion. So it does leave some questions, and we don't have the actual policy on the agenda tonight. It's just the veto override to reinstate the motion that was previously adopted. So if you override the veto, then that motion is in place until you, as a council, meet to discuss any additional parameters or criteria that you want to place on, on that particular policy.
So, tell me, Sarah, what are you thinking for best option?
Well, I put forward a motion to overturn the veto, so I think that's where we're at at the moment.
Okay. And just to clarify the motion, it is linked to the health advisory to St. Croix County. So it's not written as an open-ended, this goes forever. It's written as, as soon as the levels go from high to substantial to whatever the next one is-
Moderate.
Then, then it would, then, then we would not need it, so-
That is correct.
It's linked to science, and it's linked to what's happening in the local community.
But that's how, and I understand what the intent might be, but all we can talk about is the actual motion, and the end of the motion was just, as long as St. Croix County Health warrants it.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I mean, I guess that, that's where some, there's definitely not a set, I hear what you're saying, but that's not what the motion was, that we're discussing.
I understand. So if we override the motion tonight, could we come back in two weeks and, and clarify, and pass a new motion with more specific language?
You can all, you can always take a policy at a future meeting, if you notice it properly for consideration.
Okay. So we could clarify what the city's asking for, the staff, we could clarify the end date, even, even if we overturn the motion, or overturn the veto, excuse me. Correct?
You could. I do think it leaves some question as to enforcement, how staff is, is going to work through it in, in the interim. You know, we've known for a long time that mask requirements, even in the state, are a challenge to enforce, even when there's good detail around it, right?
Yeah.
So I think those, those questions still exist regardless, until you provide further direction.
Okay.
You know, I'll, I'll be as bold as to say, I'll stand with the employees, and I will not comply with a mask requirement.
So I want to get this straight, because I am, I'm still confused about, about the county. The county is not requiring masks in their own building.
Nope.
And-
Have that right here.
What, pardon me?
I have that right here.
And what they say is, it should, it not shall, must, it says should. And, and that's easy enough to accomplish, and, you know, I mean, I would think that, I mean, that's what you do, right, Sarah? You have the, we follow the county and CDC guidelines, and you don't require masks in there.
We follow, with respect to the county guidelines, we have our doors opened at both spots, so that we have air flowing through at all times, so that it is not an enclosed space, but so that air is moving.
So can I comment on that, too? I mean, just so the council remembers this, when COVID first started, one of the things that we did, once we started contemplating reopening City Hall and our other buildings, is we hired McKinstry, which are specialists in indoor environmental things like that, they do energy efficiency projects, whatever, but they pivoted to focus strictly on assisting businesses, city buildings, things like that, and reopening safely. So we actually, using the first round of CARES funding, spent about $11,000 on a series of studies that Ms. Kinsry did to review the indoor air quality- on a series of studies that Ms. Kinstry did to review the indoor air quality of our buildings to take a look at what would be the optimum settings in this, and this is all of our city facilities. This includes the PD Library and City Hall. Would it be the optimum settings to meet the CDC guidelines for internal air turnover? The amounts of external air that are coming into the building mixed with, you know, our, our internal air. They, they established like the zones in our building. They, they gave us the settings for every one of our HVAC units, which as we've discussed in the past as a council, we have way too many in City Hall, but it's also something we'll have to fix in the future. But they, if you remember, when we got the first study from McKinstry, we had just started reopening City Hall on a limited basis. We immediately actually reclosed City Hall. Because what McKinstry told us was, in their first review of City Hall, was that basically if there was one person with COVID in the building, it would spread to pretty much every office in the building based on how our HVAC system was operating at that time. So we immediately closed City Hall. We remained closed for almost a month while McKinstry did an updated study on the building. They recalibrated every one of our HVAC units to provide separation, to provide the optimal amount of outdoor air mixed, mixed in through our air conditioning and heating and everything else. And then also set the system as far as the overall building turnover went. They even gave us the numbers of how many people we could have on each floor at any one time to maintain the optimal safety within our building with an air quality. So, you know, again, I'm not trying to weigh in on the policy of masking. I'm just trying to weigh in on, one, what the city has done. So we have spent an extensive amount of money and we have optimized our systems and our buildings to make sure that we are as safe as possible. And like I said, this is not, you know, us opening a couple of windows and things like that. I mean, we have our systems have been programmed and set by a third-party expert that we paid a significant amount of money to to do that work for. And so we have done that. And, you know, when we talk about, you know, city staff and things like that, our city staff aren't saying, if the council directs us to, we're, we're not going to wear masks. What we're saying is, we're more concerned about the enforcement side of it. I can give you an example that during the earlier parts of COVID, one of our library aides asked a patron to put a mask on who wasn't wearing one. And she was verbally assaulted to the point where the police had to be called, the person had to be escorted out of the building, those sort of things. So you see this all the time in the news. I'm not trying to, you know, weigh in on your policy decision. I'm just trying to make sure that, one, you're clear on what we've done so far to protect our employees and visitors to our building. And then, two, what your expectations are of our staff and how you want them to enforce this. Because I, I do want to make sure that we're very clear on that, because if, if you have certain levels of expectation about enforcement, then we need to talk about how we'll do that. Because I can't ask a twenty-hour-a-week front desk person at City Hall to be doing that. We're going to have to look at other ways to make sure that we have somebody in the building at all times that's able to enforce something that doesn't cause issues. And again, I've said this before, I hate that this is a problem, but it is. And we have to look at the safety of our staff. And that's what I'm talking about here. I'm not talking about the policy. I'm not trying to weigh in against a policy of masking or not. I'm just trying to, you know, explain to you the facts about what we've done to make our buildings as safe as possible and then clarify what our expectations are, because then my job is to make sure that we can fulfill the council's expectations. But if I don't know what they are, I can't do that.
Aaron, this is Paul DeZeele. Do you think it would be, would you feel more comfortable coming back in two weeks and trying to, trying to rewrite a motion? Or trying, you want that clarification? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I definitely would, because at this point, what would have to happen is if you overturn the veto, we would put the signs up, but we would do zero enforcement. We would not ask our staff to enforce this against anyone visiting our buildings, whether it's citizens, a lot of their elected officials, committee commissioner members, anything like that. We would put the signs up, but we can't, we're not going to enforce it. Until we get further direction from the council on how they want to see it enforced, I wouldn't even know what we would do. And so I, I would, I would prefer that we really knew what we're doing before we did, before we made a decision. Because that was what we ran into last time, and that's where we did, you know, receive some complaints about noncompliance. And, you know, I think my responses were probably very unfulfilling to those that asked about why we didn't do more. So my preference would be, is that we had some clear direction of what you wanted before you approved it. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We ready to vote? Everybody understand the motion?
Can we just read, read it back one more time?
One second. I gotta scroll back up. Uh, the motion was, sorry.
I have just to overturn Mayor O'Connor's veto, is what the motion from Sarah was.
Got that, Aaron?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I have from, motion by Brooke, from Sarah, to overturn Mayor O'Connor's veto.
Correct. In the original motion then that you would be overturning the veto on was a motion by Councilmember DeZeele, seconded by Councilmember Brooke, to require wearing a mask at all city facilities as long as St. Croix County Health warrants it.
All right, everybody understand it?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion is not approved. The veto is upheld. Uh, discussion and possible action on declaration of emergency related to the September seventeenth, 2021 storms. Aaron?
So, as part of any sort of storm that we have, I apologize, I'm texting our city attorney just to give him the heads up that we're closed. The, anytime we have a storm such as we did, we generally need to have a declaration of emergency declared within 24 hours of the event to make us eligible for any potential state or federal funding that may be allocated for recovery. And so to do that, clearly, it's not anticipated that you can call a special council meeting. So the mayor is allowed to make that declaration of emergency and that it must be brought forward to the council at their next meeting, which is tonight, to approve that declaration. I did email that declaration to the council. It's very basic. It just basically says we had a bad storm. We have damage. We are unaware yet of the extent of that damage. But we are declaring a state of emergency to make us eligible for any potential funds that we could be eligible for. That's all this does, is it makes it eligible for those funds and that's it. No other, there's nothing else granted with this state of emergency other than eligibility for potential state and federal funding to help offset the costs of recovery.
I move we accept the declaration of emergency. Second?
Got it. A motion is second to approve the declaration of state of emergency. Any discussion?
Just one question, maybe for Nick. Is generally on resolution of emergency, do you have to put a time limit on it? I thought there needed to be some kind of a time piece to it. A date, you know, when it ends? Did it go, you know, for extending it or?
I don't think so. For the purposes, purposes that Aaron's outlined, I don't think you need one. I mean, right now, you're, you're currently kind of assessing damage. And so I, I think you're fine without putting a, a date on it, but you may want to clarify in the future. But as Aaron has said, you know, the sole purpose right now is just to make available for funding, should there be additional funding available.
Got it.
Correct. So if this was some sort of declaration of emergency that actually either granted special authority to the mayor or council or to staff or that set some sort of special limitations on maybe like public commerce or something like that, then yes, we would definitely have to have the end date. So I think if you think back to some of the issues we were experiencing this past summer, when Minnesota had a full lockdown on their bars and restaurants and we did not, we had a state of emergency that was declared and then extended basically every couple of weeks to help address a lot of the issues that we were having in our downtown area. That put specific requirements on some of our local businesses and things like that. So that required that end date. This is only just saying that, hey, we had a storm on this date, caused us damage. We want to be eligible for money. So with something like this, there's no end date because it's, it's basically centered specifically on an event that's already occurred.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds and conducting other public business because competitive and bargaining reason require a closed session. During closed session, the council will discuss matters to collective bargaining agreement negotiations with both represented police associations. Do we have a motion?
Move to go into closed session.
Second?
We got a motion, a second to go into closed session. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZeele?
I'm gonna say no, but I'm gonna explain. I think that we should be open with our police officers and I think they deserve the respect of an open session. I would rather do this in open session.
Weber?
Yes.
Brooke?
I'm going to say no for the same reason as Councilman DeZeele.
Hall?
Yes.
All right, motion's approved. We're going into closed session. Aaron, are we staying here in the, in the room?
Nope. You guys are gonna move to the, to fire, to the fire, um, kind of office across the hall. And then one just quick thing to clarify, any decision we make has to be made in open session, open session. All we're gonna talk about in the closed session was our bargaining strategy and, you know, things like that, that we may want to not share for future bargaining sessions. But the actual decision itself and, you know, all that stuff, that'll be all done in open session.
Aaron, could you also just explain for people that are watching this at home, how closed session works? That we could be gone for fifteen minutes? It could be an hour?
Correct. We don't know. It'll be up to the council how long they want to discuss this. I, you know, I can't say. I'm hoping it'll be way less than an hour.
Me too.
Closer to fifteen minutes.
At what time? I'm gonna say eight, five.
All right, we're back in open session.
I'll make the motion to ratify both contracts.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second to ratify the contracts. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I want to say I, I value our law enforcement officials and I really like the commitment the city is making to increase wages over the next four years to make sure we're paying them what they deserve and that we're competitive with surrounding communities.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Uh, I've got nothing. Anybody?
I do. I just want to thank the fire department, especially the Public Works and the Police Department and all the city staff. They really stepped up. And the neighbors in our community that got out there and helped. It was nice. It was enough of the BS politics stuff and it was just nice to see everybody get together.
I sent a letter to the editor expressing that as well, so it should be appearing in Thursday's paper.
Excellent.
And, oops, I'm sorry.
On a personal present, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
I guess at this point, I'm officially announcing my resignation from the council effective November thirtieth. My request would be that the council move ahead with my replacement as quickly and as, as possible. I do not want to, really don't want to see the district without a representative for five months.
Okay. Anybody else? Thanks, Jim.
Oops, I'm sorry. You go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We're all so polite now. I, I just want to reflect over, if we think about since March twentieth, we, 2020, we've had COVID, we've had construction, and now we've had some serious storm destruction. As we're looking at the CARES funding that we're getting, I want us to take some consideration on what we can do to support our small business community and individual families in our community that have struggled. And we have had the ultimate trifecta in our community. And I would like some funding to be set aside, whether it's for grants and whether it's through the CARES or we use the CARES funding for kind of necessities and then we budget for something like that. I think we owe it to our community to support them in that measure. So I'd like discussion and possible action.
I just wanted to congratulate Chief St. Martin in the fire station and the rest of the fire department for spectacular open house on September eleventh. I think we had a really good turnout. And this is a great station. So thank you, Chief Martin, St. Martin.
Move to adjourn.
No. Oh, sorry. I'm not done. So I want to thank Mike Maraz and the Public Works Crew and Public Utilities and Mark Renon Johnson and all those folks that worked so hard with the storm cleanup. Just unbelievable job by city staff and volunteers who I think were out there as well. I do have two things I'd like to place on the agenda for our next meeting. One is I'd like to revisit the public, excuse me, the mask mandate in publicly-owned city buildings. Just so we can revisit that and see if we can get it right with language. And then the second thing, I really, the more I've been thinking about this, is we really should be talking about city messaging to encourage vaccines. The only way that we're gonna get through this pandemic is to increase our vaccination rates in St. Croix County. So that's something that the St. Croix County Health Department, I talked about with them today. And they said, anything we can do as a city, whether that's on the, you know, website, whether that's in utility bills, whatever, would be helpful. So I want to have a conversation and possible action on messaging for encouraging vaccinations.
Paul, did you want possible action on the mask as well or just discussion?
Both of those, thank you.
I've got some information. So the.
Point of order, I do have a motion on the floor. Could you call for a second?
Is there a second to the motion? All right.
So the, um, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is very interested in our diversity committee. So I attended the REAL 101 training that they had and participated, learned a lot. And they invited me to join a work group on diversity, equity and inclusion. And so we had our first meeting last week. And one of the things that came up was I said, yes, we are going to be appointing people to our diversity committee on Monday. And they were very interested in, in things. And one of the questions that they asked was, do you think that communities would like a template on how to set up a diversity committee? They also asked, would cities like to have a, or municipalities like to have a template for listening sessions as well? And I said, yes, both of those would be really good. And that we had used Red Wing, Minnesota as a template for our diversity committee. And they were very interested in that. So kudos to everybody for moving forward with this.
And one last thing, I think we should, just so it doesn't get lost through the cracks, the, the council member, we need to, I think, figure out, or Mr. Mayor, we need to figure out whatever council member is going to be that liaison to the diversity committee, just so we get that up and running next meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.